It's greener.
That's white. Sure is white.
Yeah, four to seven? It's a big one. Meter center, yeah.
Think it's on? Okay, alright, we'll go ahead and go. I'd like to call the Maumell City Council meeting to order. Alderman Lewis has notified me that he will not be here tonight. He is working out of town, and so he will not make it. And so we will continue on with seven Alderman. Alderman Vapurzan has graciously said he would do the invocation and pledge of allegiance, so at this time we'll stand for that.
Let's pray. Father, we love you. We thank you that we could be here for this moment. There'll never be another one like it. We thank you that your presence is promised to us, and we thank you that you loved us enough to give us your son. Lord, our hearts are heavy tonight for the Pangburn family and their loss. Father, I pray that you would strengthen and uplift them and use us to comfort them in a way that would honor you for the loss of those and our nation. So many people going through inclement weather, difficult situations, and we can always be thankful for so much. For the men and women who protect us here and overseas, we ask for their protection. Thank you for your blessings upon us. We are most grateful for them. Bless what we do here tonight. I pray that you would be honored by it. In Jesus' name I ask it. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item is special guests and announcements, and we have Mr. Jay Hartman with us tonight from Energy. He's our customer service rep, and there've been several outages in the recent months here in Maumell. And so Mr. Hartman is gonna address those outages and what Energy's doing to try to keep that from occurring in the future. Mr. Hartman, if you would? Oh, he's got special aides or props.
In case I had to get out of here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman, for allowing me to come out here tonight and basically talk to you guys about these recent outages that we've had. Jay Hartman, Customer Service Manager for Energy Arkansas. I brought one person with me, Mr. Desi Hunter, and Desi is the Operations Coordinator for this area, but Desi also lives in this area. Many of you guys know Desi. I'm gonna claim Adrian Green too, even though Adrian's retired. He's a very experienced employee that has been with the company for years, and he'll keep me honest, make sure that I'm not saying nothing that's not in line. If he said, you know, that ain't right, so. Anyway, I wanna thank you again for letting me come out. Basically, let me start off by saying Energy does take pride in being the electric provider for Maumell. We take pride in being, providing safe and reliable power. We did have a lot of problems that took place in August that was back-to-back, and that really emphasized that we needed to do some changes over in that area. I wanna apologize to those that were impacted. It's not the type of service that we wanna provide as a company, and we're gonna do something to make some changes to get it resolved. I've put together a PowerPoint that's gonna try to take us through what, some of the details about those outages. It's gonna talk about some of the processes and equipment that we have in place, and then also the plan of action that we've come up with thus far to try to address some of the issues. I started off, that first item, I didn't think I should talk about the August issues before explaining what happened on June 22nd, which impacted all of Maumell. We had a substation that had a fault that damaged quite a bit of equipment. We had, we had eleven insulators that had a burn or flash on them. A lot of the animal mitigation on the bus melted in some very large areas. And I say that because we really didn't find the exact cause of the problem. We didn't find a dead bird on the ground or anything. Whatever caused this fault disintegrated. But we assumed that there was some type of activity, maybe a bird that had a piece of material that crossed phases that caused this fault. That's just really an assumption that we're having to make, 'cause we didn't have no evidence after the fact. But that outage caused a pretty big outage. We had fifty-five thousand three hundred and eighteen customers out. The guys got out there, they was able to do some switching, and got thirty-one hundred of those customers back on. Most of this side of Maumell got back on, and then twenty-two hundred was still out of service up to about one o'clock that morning. And that's just 'cause that area, we couldn't do any switching to pick those customers up. We picked up the North Shore part over there, that section, and the apartments up that street, we weren't able to pick up. So that's what happened there. We had a major fault, and that's what I'm calling a large outage. And I'm saying that twice because I'm gonna mention something about the texting and the view outage map stuff when we're dealing with large outages. That's kinda a difficult process. Now, these were the outages that came back-to-back, August's second, fifteenth, eighteenth, and eleventh. On the second, right at the corner of South Odom and South Shore, we had some cable that failed. We isolated, came out and isolated that problem and got the power restored. Now, let me stop here and kinda explain a little bit about how that works. That outage was on the Tuesday at four fifty-four P.M. Now, overhead and underground, you got different type personnel that work with those. Overhead, you can send a guy out, he can see the line, he can see a fuse down, he can see a phase that may be off the arrestor for whatever reason. You can do a little more visual, visual analysis. Underground, you have to send out a crew of people, 'cause they work in between. Somebody gotta be at that switchgear, somebody gotta be at the other one. You radio and open it up. You know, you're working together as a team trying to find where the fault actually is on the circuit. Well, just FYI, just for information, at four fifty-four, our guys get off at four thirty. They work from seven thirty to four thirty. So they all going to wherever they live, you know, wherever they live. Same situation the other cities have. And then you gotta call them back. So you're calling them back, they gotta go back to the office, get their team, get their maps, get all their information straight. Then they come out here, and then they work on the problem. So just FYI, the process is, some folks think that we have people just sitting there throughout the whole night that can handle underground. We do have some people that might could do a, throw a switch in, but if it gets into something sensitive like underground with pad-mounted switch gears and stuff, you're gonna have to have a crew to come in, and we call that our underground department. So that one on Tuesday was five fifty-four. So just when they had left, we had to get them all back, and we got that restored at eight fifty-nine. On the eleventh, this was over in the Roland Oaks area, that one actually happened at seven forty-nine P.M., a little later on. Same process. We gotta bring them in, and we got that back on at eleven-ten, and that was some cable that failed underneath a street. The next one will be August the fifteenth. Now, on the fifteenth, I got OCR, which is a reclosure that operated. The timing of that was a lot better. It was at five thirty-one. We caught them before they left the property, and we was able to send them out here, and the reclosure is something that you can try to see if it restores the power and not have to do all the switching and stuff that you have to get into. They tried that reclosure, it hailed, they went home, everything was fine. You say, well, what caused the reclosure to operate? Again, that could be a mouse. You can have any kind of little fault that operates the reclosure, 'cause that reclosure's actually working like it's supposed to, 'cause you don't want it to burn up the whole, all the equipment, and then you really have a major problem. So it operates just like the fault protector on your home. If you have a short on something, it's gonna fault, and you gotta go punch the button and get it back. Well, that reclosure operated for whatever reason, and we were able to go out there and close it in and get everybody back home. So that outage was not as lengthy as the other ones. On the eighteenth, what happened there is on August the second, when that cable failed, our crew came out and they fixed the cable, and I'm gonna show you a picture of where that's located. When they fixed the cable, they tested the cable, it was good, put load on it, and some more cable, some more cable failed in a different area. So that's what happened on the eighteenth, and the time of that was, the eighteenth was nine oh two A.M., and it got back on at ten forty-one. So they were already out here working, so we're gonna have to send them, send them and all that. So that's basically the details on what those outages. Now, let me show you the next, go to the next slide. Right here, back to the substation outage, again, like I said, we added what we thought might would help in that situation on some birds maybe causing the problem. We added some additional animal mitigation. And these animals kinda rotate, it's kinda electronic vibration that rotates the head around. But you can see in a couple areas, we put them here, put them here, and then there's a couple other areas in here. It might even be up there, that we've got these aisles installed just to try to prevent that from happening again. Go to the next one, please. View outage. Now, our view outage and our outage texting, it's really set up to help customers with information doing outages. Most of the time, I wanted to say ninety-nine percent of the time, but I don't know if I can have a percentage, but most of the time, it works really good. As a fact, I was just at a meeting with J.D. Powell, and they said we're ranked one of the better ones in the nation on giving that information out. Where it don't, where it doesn't work very good is if you're doing a lot of switching, which we had to do with that substation. We had to do all kinds of open up here and pick it up there type stuff. And if the system doesn't catch up with that, you unfortunately might get a text saying that you're out, and you really wasn't out. It's just not matching up in the system. That's something that we're gonna have to internally work on a way to, you know, basically keep up with all the changes that's going on. But when you're doing emergency switching, sometimes in the heat of battle, all that doesn't get communicated back to the person that's putting it in the system. So again, those people that were affected by that, I just have to apologize. But it's on the larger outages that it really doesn't work as well as on the smaller outages. Next slide. Okay. Buried versus direct buried. And what I'm talking about is, for years, it was the policy to just take the cable and put it in the ground with no conduit. We have some of the older areas that, especially not on the main trunk, that still have that. Most of our main trunk, which probably, if you wanna picture that as Odom, it's kinda like a main trunk area, that's in conduit. But back in the residential areas, you may still have some that's what they call a direct buried. And that was just the normal policy of what we did. Now, we require everybody to put everything in conduit, so that's a non-issue now. But some of the benefits of going in conduit is that it protects the wire from the soil and its surroundings. And then if you should have a fault, which you can't, 'cause the ones that we had on South Odom are in conduit, they had a fault. But it's easier to replace. You could pull it in and out a lot easier without having to tear everything up and bore and all that. Possible causes. When we had our analysis of what was taking place while we was having multiple outages back-to-back, these were the things that they thought might be a cause, 'cause age of some of that wire is getting a little older. Excessive rain, even though it might not have rained that day, if somehow that rain and the soil gets in there, then that could cause you to have a fault, and moisture. Now, the life expectancy of this cable is, you know, thirty, forty years. You don't have a problem at all with it. But if you should have a small puncture in the cable, and I brought a piece of it, even the size of a pinhole, if water gets into that cable, then it's gonna cause a fault, open up again. This is safe, it's doing exactly what it's supposed to do, 'cause they don't want nobody to get electrocuted or anything. So it's operating right, but if you have a small hole in your cable, then you can have something like this happen. And this hole might have been the size of this pin originally, did it. And this is just one phase. You got three phases on each circuit. Anyway, this is a piece of one of those cables from being out there, according to what he told me, that they took off on South Odom. Now, I just wanna emphasize, even if we install new cable, we can't guarantee that you're not gonna have any power outages, because there's a lot of factors coming in play. You got storms, you got animals, and of course, public inflicted damages that could take place, and I'll talk about that real briefly in a second, too. Go to the next. Okay. This is what we've completed thus far, and some of them will be directly impacted to the people on South Odom. The six hundred feet of seven fifty aluminum cable has been replaced at the intersection of South Odom and South Shore. That was done in August, when we had the failure, we put all new cable in there. And I'm gonna show you a picture of that on the next slide. Let me just cover these, and I'll take you to the picture. But the six hundred feet failed, we put new cable, then I told you, like on the eighteenth, we had some more cable that failed. That's just five hundred feet. That's been pulled, it's in place, but I'm gonna have to work with the city or, and the people involved, because the switchgear, the way it's placed on the pad, it's gonna have to be lifted up in order for them to tie it in. So the cable's in place, but it's not actually hot, so we're serving the area, just not using that cable right there. But it's new cable in this area. We, back in April, and part of the testing, I'm gonna mention that we've done some testing. We did some testing up in the Roland Oaks area, and we replaced six thousand feet of single-phase number-two aluminum underground primary. That's just a little, you got the seven fifty aluminum, that's what your big trunk line. But this is primary, it's just number-two that goes into the neighborhoods. I'm gonna show you a picture where that is, but that was done in April. Then thirty-nine hundred feet of single-phase was done on Odom Boulevard and Kingsland Drive. That was done in May. And again, those were results of some of the findings and decisions to replace some cable that was aged. And then a thousand feet of seven fifty aluminum primary on the corner of Woodland and Oak Forest on North Odom. And that was done actually last year. I don't have the month, but that was done. So the proactive work that we're gonna continue to do, we've been doing in Maumell, but we're gonna continue to do more, is testing of underground cable and then switchgear inspections. And that's gonna help us identify any equipment that is very likely or shows to be likely to be failing, so that it can be placed on the list to be replaced. Again, we're gonna have to coordinate our efforts so that, you know, we're addressing, kinda prioritize the equipment out here. We can't come and replace the whole thing in one swoop, but we can make sure that we are doing our inspections and prioritizing our equipment and replacing those that show to be replaced. Go to the next slide. I may have you go back so that they'll know what this is. Okay. This is the six thousand feet of number-two aluminum that I told you guys about that we replaced. Go back to the, talk a time. Can you go up?
He's there.
Okay, that's this one right here. Okay, now, from Wood, let's see, where is Woodland? Woodland to Oak Forest, now go back, thousand feet. This is Woodland to Oak, this is that thousand feet there. I should've, let me see, I might have it right here. Thirty-nine hundred feet replaced on the corner of North Odom and Kingsland. That's right here. All that was replaced. And then, go back, go forward one time, forward, excuse me. This is the area over here on South Odom. Both the five hundred and the six hundred feet, that's where you had your outage right there the first time, and then it blew off. So the five and six hundred is that whole piece right there together, and that's all new cable, all three phases replaced. And that affects all this birdie, sand trap, and all that up in this area. Okay, go to the next. So, we're committed to improving the reliability. We have done, since these outages taken place, many years, researching, and that's all been completed to know what is direct buried and what's in cable already. So that's been done. We're developing a multi-year solution to it. We're looking at replacing the trunk lines first. Again, that's the main Odom. Making sure if that stuff is twenty-five, thirty years old, let's have a plan to put dollars in, you know, on a regular basis until we get it all replaced all the way around. Right here, installing new switching equipment. Again, I told you about us doing the switchgear inspections, but right here, this is kinda new. Upgrading targeted reclosures. We've had reclosures, y'all may have heard me talk about them before. Matter of fact, up in the northwest area, we had that one that was operating crazy, and we finally got that fixed. But they've got reclosures now that can sense a fault. They're quite a bit more expensive than the regular ones. But we're thinking that we wanna install one or two of those, you know, as we kinda go through our plan, that, like when I told you that that OCR operated, we had to send somebody out. This reclosure will actually open up, but then it will send a signal out to see, well, is the fault clear? If it is, then it'll kick it back on, versus us sending a crew of, god forbid, they already home. We had to bring them in to send them out and all that. So that's a technology that's available to us, and we've put on the table to install a few of those where we have some of the older ones. Now, this is another new technology that we don't have currently out here in Maumell, but we wanna bring as we make these changes. Pad-mounted reclosures. Now, these reclosures, right now, are kinda on the outside because they're on poles. But if we have a reclosure that does the same thing, we could do a little bit more sectionalizing in the middle of the area, and that will reduce the larger pocket of people being out at one time to a more smaller number. So again, those are pretty pricey deals, but that is something that's on the table, and we're getting the nod right now to get some of those installed. Prioritization of cable replacement projects. Replace twenty-two hundred feet of trunk line cable on Oak Forest Drive between Roland Oaks and North Odom. I don't think I put that picture in there of that, but that is already being designed, and you should see work being done on that real soon. And again, that's kinda some of the results of some of that testing that we did. I would say, was that the end of last year, or you wasn't involved with that part ever so? But anyway, we've done some testing, and we've already proved the project, and this is gonna give us a lot more capability on our switching if we have problems in that area. Right now, that wire is not able to carry the load through certain areas, so it's gonna be upsized to a more, a larger wire. But the long-term project that's kinda more back in the South Odom area is the nineteen hundred feet of number-two aluminum, which is a smaller wire again. It's been there for years. We wanna upsize that wire to a larger seven fifty-type wire, and that's gonna give us, and that's a fair manner and fair way to the water plant, to allow more switching capabilities. Now, this doesn't prevent an outage, but it does help us to get power restored a little more quicker, 'cause right now, we can't run the power that way because the size of the wire is too small. Go to the next. So last, this is from the last slide. Commit to improving reliability. One of the things that came out in our discussion is we had a couple vehicles hit the switchgear on South Odom and Masters Place, if you guys are familiar with that. We've decided to install the barriers, or some called the bull dills around it, and that's gonna be done before the end of the year. So hopefully, that'll prevent an outage from happening. And then we've gotten approval, and this is a long-term project, two thousand nineteen, it should be up and running. But the MacArthur Substation is being approved and processed, and that's gonna help. If we should, if we ever had another problem like we had on June 22nd, we could do a little bit more switching, maybe get all those customers that was impacted by that. But that'll help with Maumell, and it'll help with Levy, and it'll help with your market stuff. We can do all kinds of switching when you have that additional substation available to you. That's pretty big. That's about an eight million dollar investment that's gonna come in around two thousand nineteen, be up and running by then. So long-term solution, we wanna replace the sections that are currently switched. We have a couple areas that, we're providing power to everybody, but we actually have it switched out of its normal configuration as soon as we can get those wires upgraded and like we need them, then we're gonna switch that back. That's first step. Then we're gonna prioritize and replace sections of seven fifty on the main line. We're gonna kinda just take that, get it a time, keep constantly investing in that infrastructure. Continue installation of new equipment. That's the, those reclosures I was telling you about. We wanna bring those into play to see if that helps. Again, more of that's for sectionalizing and reducing the number of customers out, and also maybe making it a little quicker. And then develop a long-term strategy for replacing the loop. And that's that area, that yellow area that was inside of some of the, we call that's kinda loop area. But we got that in a few other areas, too, and we just gotta look at how we can replace those. Here, you pass the yellow one, right there. That's what we call a loop, and you got that in several areas. Those are the red buried, and we wanna get the primaries first, but once we get those done, then we'll move into replacing the red buried areas. Was that the last?
Yep.
Okay, and then of course, continue to communicate. I talked to the mayor quite a bit, and I wanna make sure that he's got all the answers. And anybody, any of you other guys that want me to come out or sit down and provide some more information, I'm more than willing to do that also. I think that's all I had, so with that, any questions that you may have? You said you wanna do some?
Well, no, we'll take questions from the Alderman first. So Timmons, Alderman Timmons?
Thanks, Jay. I really appreciate the presentation, and I live on South Shore, so I can relate to just about everything that you're talking about. Is it possible, even the calls, that I gotta really appreciate those, you know? 'Cause sometime I'm not in the area. It's like, which office do I go to if it's out? It helps me a lot. I even, I did get a call, and it wasn't out. I was serious, like, I've got power, you know, so. But that only happened once. Now, the presentation that you have, is that accessible to us to send out? I'd really, I'd really like to have a copy of that.
Okay.
If she was saying it before she gives it back.
Drag it.
We don't, it's nothing in there that's.
Thank you.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Thank you so much, Mr. Hartman. That was wonderful. The, would it be cost-effective to consider, I don't know, moving what's at Masters Place in Odom? It seems to be a target, so it doesn't get hit, or is it just, that's just part of, I don't know, I just.
And I can't say that it's not, I mean, it's probably not cost-effective now to this day.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was something that we would've planned or knew that it was gonna be hit that much, whether that's the best spot for it, that probably could've been discussed more on the front.
The MacArthur Substation, where's that gonna be? The, um, the MacArthur, uh, substation, where's that gonna be placed at?
It's Old MacArthur Boulevard, kinda Camp Robinson area, right, right in that area, uh, that's MacArthur, I believe.
It is, it's a big area, so, okay.
I've got the, uh, maps of it if you-
That's all, I'll take a look later, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
A- and the, the switchgear you're talking about, I mean, I know one time it was hit because of, uh, just an automobile accident, just, I mean, a car left the road. Another time it was icy conditions, so they, and then where it's located at, you wouldn't think they could hit it, there's a pretty good ditch they have to go through to get there, but if they're coming around that corner, it's on the outside of a corner, and so they, they can hit it. Uh, and they take out a fence when they do that also. But the bollards should hopefully stop a vehicle from damaging the switchgear, but it's been hit twice during events. And, uh, so, and I will say that Mr. Hartman comes out also on, uh, he was out here on August the second, that night, until they got it done, because that also affected Kroger and the commercial area. So he was out here till nine o'clock and, and taking care of the situation and keeping me informed, so I appreciate that. Alderman Saunders?
Um, thanks for coming to talk to us, Mr. Hartman. I do have a question that doesn't have to do with these outages, if I may, um, and you may, you may not be able to answer this. We've had some talk in our last budget meeting about, about changing to a, uh, roundabout at a very dangerous intersection here, which is South Odom and Club Manor. We've had a lot of wrecks there. I believe that there's a green box and that's a switching box.
Switchgear.
And that does affect the layout of this and, uh, through the mayor, we got some estimated numbers for the cost of moving that thing. My question is this, if you're upgrading the system and you do happen to upgrade that particular box, would it make it cheaper to move it if you were in the middle of an upgrade?
Well, the upgrade that I'm, I'm referring to and, and we can look at that for you if you give me a little more information, but it would go right back on top of the same pad. It's just gonna be a different, more techno- technological or better technology type piece of equipment right in that same spot. If you're talking about moving it to a different location and that would-
It, it's pretty pricey as it sits now to move it from the numbers that we got before, it's pretty expensive, so it really wasn't an option. But I'm thinking maybe it would be substantially cheaper if you're in the process of redoing the wiring connected to it in the switching box, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that would be kinda, some engineering would have to get involved with that. But I'm just, just my honest opinion, if we're going back in the same spot, then, then that's not gonna help you much.
Right, right.
It's just gonna be a new, taking that piece of equipment out, connecting a new one in, that's gotta live and grow now.
And that piece of equipment was put in Veterans Day of last year, so it's fairly new equipment, it's 'cause, uh, uh, Mr. Hartman and I were on the phone that day, 'cause I was traveling that day and it, but that, they put them out that day to replace that one because we'd had several faults inside that gear, that switchgear. It's at Justice House, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious question, thank you.
Yeah, so that's one of the newer ones, I mean, 'cause if you look, the, the, the old boxes are kinda silver or gray colors, that's the switchgears. The newer ones are all green, so if, if it's green, it's been replaced probably from the older ones now. I, I mean, that doesn't mean they were replaced all last year, they could've been replaced several years back, but they're now green instead of the silver gray color.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've got, I've got a couple of comments from, uh, citizens, so we'll take comments from them, uh, at this time. Uh, the first, uh, comment card I have is from Jerry Parker. If you would, just state your name and address at the microphone, please.
Jerry Parker, fifteen Par Drive. And again, appreciate the opportunity to speak here, and so just a couple of quick questions.
Okay, if you would, address the council and then Mr. Hartman can come back up afterwards, yes.
So, um, you've answered a lot of the questions I had. I, I think my biggest concern at this point is, is we know that number two concentric cable has a life expectancy of twenty years and concentric meaning that the neutral is wound on the outside of the jacket. And, and, you know, with that in mind, in, in the, the Par area where, where we live, uh, we, we've had a number of outages and those outages are for typically an extended period of time. And, and I suspect the cable has a lot to do with that and the aging of that cable. Uh, long-term plan, and I, I, I would like to see some definition around long-term plan, that could be three years, five years, but we kinda like to have an idea about, you know, what, what does that really mean? Is that, uh, is that cable continues to break down and it's well beyond life expectancy at this point and, and we begin to lose the neutral, uh, those of us who are homeowners, we, we have concern about our appliances, our electronics. Uh, if we lose that neutral, uh, that's, 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 uh, the opportunity to dam- for that equipment to become damaged is certainly, uh, is certainly a very high likelihood. So, a- again, I think we'd like to understand, uh, what does long-term mean for our area? And, and in the future, would, would energy be looking at, um, maybe not allowing that, uh, that length of time before you, before you upgrade or update your cabling or your infrastructure? Twenty years in the late seventies would have put replacement time being around two thousand and we're, we're rapidly approaching two thousand seventeen, so we're a good fifteen years past the time that you would've expected that that cabling should've been, should've been replaced or at least plans in place to replace it. So, um, again, you've, you've answered most of, most of the questions that I had. Um, you know, you've identified the fact that you are dealing with aging equipment and aging cabling. Um, and you have identified the fact that what you're going back with will be in conduit and it will be the thirty-five to forty-year rated cable. So that's, that's all good, that's good news for us. But again, uh, definition around long-term and, and-
That's true.
And then those of us who are homeowners that, that have the, um, possibility of losing that neutral on that old cable, um, would like to know what, uh, you know, what energy we'd do to support that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Parker. Um, Ms. Suzie Pointer?
Hi, my name is Suzie Pointer and I live at forty-three Ninth Fairway Loop. Uh, and I know you all know where that is, 'cause if you're coming to the Maumell Country Club, you take a right onto Par Drive, which is where Jody and her husband live, and then you go over the speed bump and there you are on the Ninth Fairway Loop. Uh, I am here to echo what Mr. Parker said and also to say to you that I was asked to be here this evening as the representative of the Ninth Fairway Loop and Par Drive Homeowners Association. We do have a lot of questions about why within the last two to three years, just suddenly, we're having these outages. Uh, my husband and I moved here in, uh, the year two thousand and we just told everybody how much we loved the power out here because we never lost power. And now all of a sudden, in the last two or three years, it's all the time. We are worried about our appliances, our TVs. By golly, when the TV goes off, then it's A T and T for another, you know, twenty minutes till it boots back up, that kind of thing. I want to, uh, also address, uh, an item that I don't think Mr. Parker spoke to and that is that we are on a loop feedback. And that means that, uh, that as I understand it, uh, electricity cannot be sent back to our area from some other direction because it's on the loop, it can only go one way. And the last outage that we had, that was a, a, a long length of time, uh, into the evening, uh, my husband and I had gone over to my brother's house on Calais Drive. They were out of power earlier in the evening too. Walgreens, they also are without power when we're without power. Their power came back on, so we came back home thinking that our power was on and we got all the way into, uh, the Maumell Country Club Drive where you could see the Maumell Country Club. All of that was on, Club Manor included. And then when you turned right onto Par Drive, nothing, there was nothing on. And there wa- fortunately was an Entergy, Entergy truck at the end of the loop and we stopped and asked the two employees in the truck, hey, what's going on? And they said, we don't know, we can't figure out why your power's not back on. So we would ask that, um, Entergy, um, look at the loop that's in our area to see if anything can be done to bring that particular, uh, part of this problem more current. And then we also would like to know if Entergy has run a, uh, load study recently on our area to see if perhaps too much has been added for that particular system to bear. I mean, we do know that it's, uh, it was installed in the late seventies, uh, that it's not in the conduit, that it is the smaller wire, that it's on the loop. And of course, uh, it's on that loop feedback system. And of course, uh, everybody wants their power on immediately when it goes off. But what we are saying is we've seen a very marked increase in powder, power outages in our area and we don't know why. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pointer. Uh, Mr. Hartman, are, are you able to address any of these questions or do, I mean, or do you need to, some time to go back and prepare something?
Well, um, a couple of them I can, I, and then I will go back and I, I've had the pleasures of, of talking to a few of the residents, so I, I've got their information already. But, but, um, as far as the, I'm gonna ask Mr. Parker to give me his again in just a second, but Ms., Ms. Pointer, the load study, we have a, a planning engineer that is responsible for this area. It is his job to, to do a study every year to make sure that we have the right amount of, uh, equipment, probably so more so at the substation to make sure that it's not overloaded, things of that nature. We have the ample equipment to serve this area. I've been told and I've asked, this question's come up before, that we are in good shape in Maumell. This is not a load issue, it's more of a age, um, small, uh, deterioration of that wire issue that needs to be replaced. And we fully understand that that's something that we're gonna have to do and it's just gonna take some time, funding to get that done. The loop feed, that I'm, I think what I'm understanding, she might stay in a circle or something and, and we come in and tap off and feed that area and it's not connected to, uh, on the back end to be able to open it up on this side and feed it from the other side. I can't say that I, I, uh, under- I know the reason why it was set up like that. We can look at it and see if it's any feasibility in us doing anything different. There's quite a few areas that only come in one way and one way out, so I, I, I'm not sure if I can answer a yay or nay that we could do anything about that, but I've got your address, we'll look and see, see what we can do. Um, Mr. Parker, what, your question was more so on the concentric neutral and the, the long-term. Now, the long-term, this happened in August and I sat with my upper management, told them we gotta get this resolved. They say, we're gonna get it resolved. I don't have a date saying that this is gonna be resolved by this time next year or anything like that, but I have got an agreement that we're gonna invest and look at upgrading those facilities and probably by you being involved, we're gonna take a little strong look at that area too. But you s- you, your area, I think, and I'm not from this area, is one of the older areas. So it makes sense for us to drive that area first with some of this investment. But I do not have a, a specific date that I can give you. And maybe soon I might have that, again, we just kinda got a huddle up here recently with the people who can make those decisions and they're shaking their head like you're shaking your head, so I'm sure we're gonna get something done and I will get that information back to you guys as we, as we do it.
The, the water, the water plant is right behind our house and the generator kicks on all the time. So the city's having to pay for extra to get diesel back there because where we live, um, we're also, you mentioned the water plant and stuff, but it's right behind us and it's kicking on all the time. I'm with Suzie, it, this has been going on for three years. I've called the engineer before and he's called me back even and said, you have very old, old equipment out there and it's just gonna continue to deteriorate. And that's what we think, I mean, so it's-
It's definitely, um-
It's a problem.
An older area and the equipment there is aged and we know about it and we're gonna commit to putting some resources in to get it replaced, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hartman, but I do think, yeah, the night, the, the long-term that you talked about cable, that should help with the back feed area for that area possibly with the new cable you're putting at the water plant, I think that would help. Yeah.
At the loop?
The loop, yeah, I think that would help with the loop by putting that cable in, 'cause you're putting it from Fairway Drive down to the water plant and Par Drive comes off right there in that area, so.
It's what's long-term, I guess that was.
Well, a- and that's, that-
Well, now that one there, that's one of the ones that I can talk about. We, we are finna make that change to the number two aluminum that goes through the, uh, golf course to the water plant. That's gonna happen, uh, oh, I, what's, I would think maybe by the end of the year we have something happening on that, and that's your, your issue.
So you're saying that because it's going to go to the water plant, it also will come down Par Drive and around Ninth Fairway Loop?
Well, currently the wire that's there, we know we can't back feed or feed it that way. By upsizing the wire to a larger wire, that's gonna give us that option, which would maybe get your power back on that we knew due to the size of wire that we wouldn't feed it. So that might be why they're telling you we, we couldn't loop you around. It's gonna give you a lot more option if you tie it to that area and I, I'd have to look at it to see, but if mayor says that.
Well, it, it appears to be that may be the case, yeah, I don't, I don't know that for sure, I'm not an electrical engineer, so I'm not gonna-
After the meeting, I'll be glad to, I'll have a man up. So, I'll explain the whole route that we do and, and everybody on Ninth Fairway Loop and talk about this tie and stuff, but I don't wanna give you-
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, yeah. And you may not wanna wait till the end of the meeting, you may wanna do it as soon as we quit discussing this, yeah, yeah. Alderman Vapurzine?
I wanna address Mr. Parker real quick, just so you know. Uh, and this, this is, this happened to me, uh, my wife and I, uh, the dishwasher was not running, the door was open. It was not running, it caught fire. Had we not been there, I don't know what had happened, but fire was coming out, flames were coming out of the dishwasher and it was not running. We called Entergy, they came out and found out we had a bad neutral in our front yard. Uh, the compressor on the air conditioner went and they also bought us a new compressor. Now they prorate your appliances to the age that they are and, uh, they, they pay accordingly. But, um, so they do help to take care of that, but if there is a question, they will come out and they will test and they are very good at, uh, if there is something that, that does, uh, burn up, they will help to take care of it, but they do prorate according to the age of the appliance. So, just so you're aware of that, yes.
Okay. Uh, we appreciate Mr. Hartman coming out and speaking to the council and we appreciate, uh, Ms. Pointer and Mr. Parker being here to, to listen to that and, uh, 'cause I know I'd gotten some emails from some of the people in that area and so I told them Mr. Hartman would be here, so we appreciate them coming out, expressing their concern, so. Uh, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is the, and y'all are welcome to leave if y'all wish to leave now. So, I mean, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, Mr. Hartman and Mr. Hunter. Next item is approval of the minutes. We have the August fifteenth regular meeting minutes, we have the August sixteenth special meeting minutes. I would, we'll need those in two motions if we can though. Uh, the packet, the minutes are in your packet, uh, for your review.
Motion to approve August fifteenth regular meeting minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the August fifteenth regular meeting, is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no, motion passes.
Motion to approve August sixteenth special meeting minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the August sixteen special meeting minutes, is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no, motion passes. Next item is public comment and I have no additional public comment cards on any other items and so we'll move on to the next item, which is financial statement review. We'll do that at the second meeting of the month. Next item is procedural motion, I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
Motion offered.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight, any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no, motion passes. First item under unfinished business, we have third reading ordinance number nine ten, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations. Ms. Briening, if you'll read that by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine ten, and ordinance amending chapter fourteen, buildings and building regulations, article four, fences of the Maumell City Code.
Alderman Mosley?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, refuse again on this. Uh, it's more of an appearance as opposed to a conflict of interest. I'll step out in the foyer, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance nine ten.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that the council adopt ordinance number nine ten. Is there a discussion? Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Ms. Brining, roll call vote.
Alderman Saunders?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vaperson?
Yes.
And Alderman Holt?
Thank you very much, the ordinance passes. Alderman Mosley? Next item is, under new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number nine-eleven amending the Maumell Land Use Plan. Ms. Brining, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine-eleven, and ordinance amending the Maumell Land Use Plan and map and for other purposes.
This is a request amend the land use plan for the area that we know is Ridgeview Trails. Mr. Brian Dale is in the audience representing the owners of this development, and Mr. Nary is here. This has been through the Planning Commission, and it has been recommended to the council for adoption. Now, we're just on first reading, so we've got two more readings to go on this, but the Planning Commission did recommend it to the council to approve. Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify here, I was looking at the plat, and it looks like it's kind of an interior area away from Odom Boulevard that's gonna be rezoned, is that correct?
That is correct. Right now, this is part of the area that is zoned R2, which allows for multifamily. Part of our overall plat will come back to have more residential or more single-family homes. We can't bring our preliminary plat to the Planning Commission until we get this rezoned first, so we're, this is a precursor to our preliminary plat that will be coming forward.
Okay, do, do we know what might become of the rest of the R2 at some point?
Uh, the developer, at this point, has no plans to develop it at any time in the near future.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Vaperson?
How many single-family residents are you?
Um, right now, we have sixty under construction. We have, hope to have between three hundred and three hundred and twenty when we're done, so the preliminary plat that'll be coming before you, probably have around two hundred and forty roughly.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And will that be just the one entrance into that zone, or is there plans for connection out to Odom?
Uh, there is plans to connect back to the existing Regulon subdivision that is down on, I guess that's South Odom there, somewhere in there, it's gotta flip from South Odom to North Odom, and I don't know where, but we're-
We've never decided where.
But that, we will, um-
It's Middle Odom.
It's Middle Odom. We're gonna tie into the existing Regulon subdivision, so we'll, we'll be looped through in that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other questions? All right, if not, this will be on second reading at the next meeting. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number nine-twelve amending the Maumell zoning map. Ms. Brining, if you read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Arkansas, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine-twelve, and ordinance amending the Maumell zoning map and for other purposes.
Okay, the, and it's been a while, I think, since we've done one of these, but the land use map has to be amended, then the zoning map has to be amended, it's the exact same piece of property, so, it's just normal procedure on what we do. We're dealing with the same piece of property. All right, if there's no questions on ordinance nine-twelve, we'll move, it'll also be on second reading at the next meeting. We'll move on to the next item, which is resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five approving the disposal of city surplus property. Ms. Brining, if you read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Pulaski County, Arkansas, resolution number two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
Okay, we've actually, we're trying to replace two pieces of equipment in the sanitation department, and so we're trying to replace a roll-off truck, and then just a, a, a rear-load sanitation truck. And so, uh, we've been given trade-in prices on these, on one of them, and the other one we're going to put on gov deals and try to sell on gov deals, but we need to surplus this property so we can proceed forward with the ordering of the other trucks that we have, so. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I just wanna make a motion that we accept resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five. Is there any questions or discussion on this item? Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yes, sir, I was wondering, do we have in the budget trucks to replace these?
Yes, sir, we do. They're currently in our two thousand sixteen budget.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, and we think we might be able to get sixty grand for-
Well, I think there's a, yeah, for both of them, yes, sir, for both of them, that's correct, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, if there's no other questions or discussion, all those in favor approving resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a discussion item, and it's the City Clerk Treasurer vacancy and appointment discussion, and you had a copy of a memo letter, I don't know exactly what you'd call it, that, uh, Mr. City Attorney prepared, kinda explaining the process and giving you some reference data with, uh, no, that's the other one, okay. But it, it explains about the attorney general's opinions and that sort of thing, so, at this time, I mean, the goal would be is to fill this vacancy as soon as possible, and there should be an advertisement in tomorrow's newspaper accepting applications. We don't give a date of when it's gonna be done in that, in that advertisement. We're just saying we will be appointing a city clerk slash treasurer and submit your applications or your resumes to this office. And we've actually had them sent to Mr. City Attorney's office, that's what we're doing at this time. So, I mean, the, if we do it on the nineteenth, that would allow only about ten days for that advertisement to be out there, and we couldn't change it, I guess we could change it next week to, to say what the date we're actually gonna be accepting them, and then, or you could do it on the third of October, which would be the next meeting after that. But I just, there's no specific timeline, it just says reasonable, so, I'll let Mr. City Attorney determine or define what reasonable is. Uh, 'cause it, reasonable to some people is not gonna be reasonable to other people. I mean, that's, you know, it's kinda like one of those definitions where you see it, you know it when you see it, or something like that, but, uh, the, so that's the, out there for discussion. Alderman Mosley?
Have we done any advertising up until tomorrow's newspaper?
We have not, no. We're, it will be in tomorrow's newspaper, and then we can put it on Facebook and website and all that, but I kinda wanted to get kinda the inclination of the council before we put it out there, but that was, only thing it's gonna say in there is like, we will be accepting applications if you're interested, send this in right now.
All right, I, I guess my, my personal preference right now, maybe to wait to that first meeting in October, but I'd be certainly interested in what everybody else thinks. That way, we, they'd have more than ten days to think about it, maybe catch it in the newspaper.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. All right, Alderman Kelly?
Yes, I'm, I'm concerned, we need to fill this, this position as soon as possible because we have a budget coming up in December, and this is the treasurer position also. So I, I would like to see us have a vote by three October, so at what point would it make sense to close off the applications, twenty-fifth?
Well, what we typically do is we close it off on the Wednesday before the agenda goes out, so, I don't have a calendar other than my phone, but, um, so the agenda would go out on the twenty-ninth, so it would close on the twenty-eighth of September is when that would close, if we were doing it at the September third, or October third meeting.
I think, in my opinion, that's more than reasonable, because we do need to move quickly.
I agree.
October third?
To vote on. We're not making a motion or anything.
Alderman Holt?
Thank you. I had a, by having a brief meeting with the learned attorney for the meeting, he has a very soothing way and helped me get past some anxiety, but the only thought that I would have, October third sounds great, I would ask him, would it be possible or practical that if we could have the resumes deadline on the Monday prior to us receiving the, that agenda for that meeting on Thursday, so that we could have a couple of days separately to read past those? I would think that the candidates that are gonna apply for this have some fairly substantial resumes, and we can have some time to look over them and know what kinda questions to ask and learn something about them. To get them all on Thursday and have a meeting on Monday is tight, but that would be my only request, is that possible and prudent? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it, it's definitely possible. I mean, it's, it's whatever the council chooses, so it's definitely possible. So just, we'd put a closing date of when the resumes or applications will be accepted up to. Alderman Saunders?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First question, at, I realize that it has been a team effort to fill in for the city clerk's position in his absence. Is it gonna put undue strain on you to go to October the third, or City Hall? I know it's, it is extra strain, and it, but-
Well, I think, I think we can manage one month. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen between now and then, so, so I may be totally, next week I may be screaming, "Why did we ever do this?", or, or Ms. Brining may be yelling at me or whatever, but, uh, but I do think that, that in order to be, have a fair timeframe for people to apply, I think that would be the best timeframe to probably do that. And before we, before y'all make a motion to pick a date and say when we're gonna have this, Mr. City Attorney, as he always does, reminded me of something. First, we have to declare a vacancy, so I need a motion, first off, to declare the city clerk treasurer's office as vacant, and then we could have a motion then to direct when the, uh, we would fill that position, so.
Some move.
Okay, we, we have a motion to declare the city clerk's treasurer's office as vacant? Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, the office is vacant, and now I'd entertain a motion to, at what date you want to appoint the new, the next city clerk treasurer, and then, and what date you would accept applications or resumes up to? Alderman Kelly?
I'd like to make a motion that we make the closing date the twenty-sixth, that allows a little bit of extra time to examine the resumes.
And then we'll vote on the third.
Twenty-sixth of September.
September.
And that is the Monday.
Then we'll vote on the-
October third.
On October third.
Okay, all right, so that is a Monday, and then we, all right, did I hear a second on that?
Second.
Okay, okay, the motion is that we accept resumes or applications on, up to, close of business on the twenty-sixth, and then that position would be appointed at the meeting, or that person would be appointed at the October third meeting. And then we would get those resumes to the council the following day that we receive them, so they would be out, sent out on Tuesday, by email, as we typically do, if that's okay with everybody.
That's fine.
Okay? All right, is there any discussion on that? Alderman Anderson?
Just one question, will the, that person be sworn in and take the seat immediately?
I would assume so.
Okay.
Uh, now, they might wanna, we might swear him in, but then they may not wanna sit in that chair that very first night, so that might be something, uh, yeah.
I mean, that's a valid, uh, some people would wanna know that, I would think, so.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Um, we could leave it up to them, but we could, we'd have to make sure the judge is available to swear him in that night, but yeah, I think that could be done. The, they don't make a vote on anything, so it's not critical in that sense, but I, so I don't, I mean, they could probably be sworn in and, and stay out there, and then the next meeting they would actually take over, 'cause, or they could sit up here and watch and see what they got themselves into.
It's not hard.
It's not hard.
I can screw it up.
All right, um, the motion is that we accept resumes, applications until September the twenty-sixth, close of business that day, and then appoint at October the third meeting.
Right.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Alderman Mosley?
Yes, sir, just a quick question, if, if I have some interest from some of my constituents, where they're wanting to try to find out more about what the position does and that sort of thing, is there somebody I can refer him to?
Well, um-
As far as the details and that sort of thing?
What, did it say refer him to you in the application? What did it say on the, on the advertisement?
They can send their resume package to me, and I'd be happy to talk with anyone about my observations of that office, if they call me. The former city clerk may be open to that, the mayor may be open to-
I, I would be willing to talk to anybody about it, I mean, but I may not remember every exact detail, and, you know, that's gonna be the, I mean, so I'd be, there's, state statute's pretty, pretty broad in what they do, and so around here, we actually have more duties that they have, and, well, I'll, we may have a job description, so let me, first, let me check that. We may have a job description, so let me check that first and see what we've got on that, but, but between Mr. City Attorney and myself, I think we can answer most of their questions.
The city code, which is available online, also has a pretty good list of, of the city clerk treasurer's responsibilities.
All right, all right, thank you very much.
We'll, we'll help them out any way we can, try to anyway, so.
All right, good, thank you very much.
Um, okay, the next item is mayor's comments, and so for once in a while here, I've got a whole bunch, seems like tonight. First item is traffic issue at the Maumell Middle School, and put possible traffic committee meeting. I included a, a article in your packet about the traffic and parking committee, we've had some new members come on the council since we've had one of those, so I was trying to make you aware of those, and then also gave you, uh, some photographs, a kind of a close-up of the middle school, and then a, a greater view that included the high school and the middle school. The situation has come up the last couple of years, at least three or four years, where in the afternoons, there's been an issue with cars trying to turn left coming out of the middle school. And part of the issue has been that there's cars stacked along Carnahan to try to get in there, and so the line of sight is disrupted, and so currently, we're providing police officers to man that intersection in the afternoons to help with the traffic congestion in that area. We, if, if, if the patrol officer's available, they go there, if they're on call, they can't go there, so, but we've, so far, we've been able to accommodate them for about two weeks now within the afternoon. We had an accident earlier this year, and we had one last year that I'm aware of. So it's not, it's not a huge issue based on number of accidents, but it's a, it's an issue, and the funny thing is, it's about a fifteen to twenty-minute window, is all it lasts. I mean, you know, it's like a, a bumblebee's nest kinda, they're just swarming like crazy, and you look up and all of a sudden, everybody's gone from that whole area, and it's like a ghost town. Uh, and so, I've met with Mr. Burgess at the middle school, who's the principal, and also met with Mr. Benny Bowers, who's head of security for all of Pulaski County Special School District. So we're working on a plan to try to alleviate some of the site issues and, and possibly put in some additional stop signs on Carnahan, and so, uh, the suggestion was that we put the stop signs on the middle drive that's there on the view that you're looking at, so it's the middle drive, but that doesn't eliminate the site problem with the cars there, and so what I've looked at, and, and it needs the blessing of Pulaski County Special School District, they're, they're, they need to look at a little more, but I would like to propose that a stop sign go at the easternmost driveway that's closest to the high school, because there's already a Lewis Nelson Drive coming in there, there's the, the drive coming out of the middle school that already have stop signs there, and to try to keep from inconvenience in the industrial park that's up Lewis Nelson Drive, they would only have to stop one time if the four-way stop was at that location. They could stop there, turn right, and depart. If you put the, the stop signs down in the middle drive, that meant an eighteen-wheeler would have to stop at Lewis Nelson and then Carnahan, travel five hundred feet down the roadway, stop again and start again. And so, uh, if we can work it out with the school district, which Mr. Bowers and Mr. Burgess both thought it was possible, what they would do is have an entry coming in at the middle drive and an exit going out at the eastern drive. And then we can eliminate, hopefully, having to have an officer out there on a daily basis in the afternoons, because there's just times we can't provide that service due to call volume or something like that. And so what we would have to do is, is a stop sign placement, other than at a normal intersection, is, requires a, a traffic committee, and so, uh, this is one of the times that we would hopefully convene the traffic committee. The traffic committee is made up of the mayor, the police chief, the public works director, and the two aldermen that represent- and the two aldermen that represent that ward where the traffic control device is slated to go in at. In this case, that would be Ward 4. So that would be Alderman Vapurzan and Alderman Holt, that would be, as a part of that traffic committee. So that's the possible, and way we would, we have to advertise it, we have to state what we're going to be doing at that meeting. So, what I would do in the advertisement is, we would put that we were looking at placing stop signs on Carnahan Drive in front of the middle school. We wouldn't indicate which drive it was gonna be at, because that way, if the traffic committee decided, or if the school district decided, "Well, it really needs to be at the other one", we'd still have the hearing if we don't isolate the exact intersection. So, trying to think ahead and not back ourselves into one, one solution issue type deal. So, I've looked at the calendar in advance, and for, with, with all kinds of meetings that we have, and, and public hearings and other things, I've come up with three dates in September that may work, and it's the 20th, the 26th, and the 27th of September. So, I don't have to have an answer tonight, but I'd need to have an answer pretty soon so that we could get that advertised. The 20th is a Tuesday, the 26th is a Monday, and the 27th is a Tuesday. So, then, all the council members are invited, you just wouldn't be voting members of the traffic committee.
And the public is too?
Oh, the public is invited, yes, yes, the public is invited. And Mr. Burgess, if, he wanted, if, once we kinda narrated a date, he wanted to try to be here too, if it was possible for him, and we kinda talked about those dates also. That was one of the dates, we kinda talked about, the possible meeting dates, so...
I'm open to any of those.
You're open to any of those? Alderman Holt, or you?
I'm fine for it.
Okay, alright. Is there anybody that has a conflict on one of those nights? Sir?
Mayor, I've got, the 26th is bad for me.
Okay, alright. So we take the 26th out of the mix. So the 20th or the 27th? Trying to think, the 20th is two weeks away.
I think that makes more sense.
The 20th? Alright, alright, we'll go for the 20th then.
What time, sir?
6:00 PM, it'll be in this room right here. Okay, we will get a notice out, but as of right now, unless Mr. Burgess can't make it on that night for some reason, or, or other people from the school district, and Mr. Hogan was here.
He's out there?
See if he's available on the 20th.
He said if you told him, he could.
That'd be a Tuesday night, so, okay, alright, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Alright, so, we'll have a traffic committee meeting to consider a stop sign on Carnahan Drive in front of the middle school on the 20th of September at 6:00 PM in this room right here. Alright, and there's a PTSO meeting, is that what they call them now? PTSO?
PTO.
PTO, they've got another letter in there now. They've got a meeting at the middle school, the 13th, that I'm gonna be at, I think Chief Williams may be there also.
I'll be there.
You'll be there, so we can let them know at that time when this traffic committee's gonna be also. Next item is bash on the Boulevard. That's a, a new festival in Malmell that I think's gonna be pretty exciting for Malmell. The Chamber's putting this on, and so there's gonna be plenty of food vendors, food trucks, there's a craft beer garden, there's a Miss Malmell pageant, there's Kid Zones, there's vendors there, there's gonna be a band, I understand, named Tragically White, that's gonna be there. Very well-known, I don't think it's any of the original members of Tragically White, but it's a well-known band. But I think it's gonna be a good day in Malmell. The weather is a little iffy right now on us, but hopefully, it'll be raining that morning and clear off, and be some great weather in the afternoon and cool. Supposed to be fairly cool on Saturday, right now, if the, if the weatherman get it right, it should be cooler than it's gonna be the rest of this week. But I think it's gonna be a great event, do what?
Is there 40% chance of rain?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, 60% chance it won't rain, so...
There you go.
Let's be optimistic here. But, I think it's gonna be a great event, but I will tell you, they're still needing volunteers to help with, with, it's free admission, but they've gotta manage certain gates and things like that with the, the beer tent and things like that, so the beer garden, they've gotta manage that, and they need people to assist, and they've got lost and found and some other areas. So, if you're, if you've got a chance, it'll be from noon until 10:00 PM this Saturday in the town center parking lot, but if you are available for a couple hours, give Alicia Gillan a call over at the chamber and help her out a little bit there.
Or the senior citizens center.
Or the senior citizens, yeah, they're taking, they're helping with volunteers too, aren't they? So you could contact either one and let them know.
Do you know if they need help, like beforehand?
Uh, I'd, I'd contact Alicia, but I, I think they want everybody set up by 10 o'clock as far as the vendors and things like that, so possibly, yeah, help them check in the vendors and all that, I would think they would, yep. And it's gotten some airtime on some TV stations, some things like that, so, and there was a good article in the River Valley edition a few weeks back on it. So, hopefully, we'll have good weather and a good event. Next item is the Senior Fishing Derby. It's, the Senior Wellness Center is sponsoring a community fishing event from 9:00 AM to noon on this Friday, September the 9th, and the day before, you can come and learn how to fish at the fishing clinic. And so, it's two days, and they are working with the game and fish and have a lot of sponsors with this, and they are also been advertising on radio and TV. They'll be on Channel 4 in the morning at 5:30 in the morning, so get up and encourage them, you know, at 5:30, and I know some of you already be up by then, but Mr. Tawana Fox will be on there with some game and fish people to promote this event, and they're expecting 150 people to come out, and it'll be over here at Lake Valencia, so another good day in Malmell. Don't forget, we also have the public hearing on the I-40 interchange, that's gonna be September the 15th from 4:00 to 7:00, and that's at the Jess Odom Community Center. So, this is meeting one of the federal requirements, but it's just one more step in the long list of things you have to do to get the interchange, so, but come, and they'll have the display boards and some things like that, and be able to tell you a little bit about it, if you need to know something about it. It'll be mainly done, it's not the highway department putting it on, it's our engineers that are putting this on, but there should be representatives from the highway department there, so... Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Is that open the whole time? I mean, is it where people come in and leave, or is it...
No, it's where they come in and leave. It's, it's a, come look at the boards, ask your questions, and leave whenever you want to. There's not a, there's not a formal presentation...
Not a set agenda?
No, no, sir. They, they don't do that very often now on the, the public hearings for the roadway projects. It's, it's easier to get people to just drop in when it's convenient for them, like that, in a bigger slot.
Stay three hours?
No, you do not have to stay three hours. You can stay 10 minutes, or you can stay all three hours, if you want to. And then the only other thing I wanted to do is update you on the alleyways, the Garden Oaks alleys, they're about 40% done with the concrete alleys now in that area. It's, we had a pretty slow start, took about...
On the one section?
On the one section, we had a very slow start. It took about four weeks, 'cause we got three inches of rain one Sunday, and then we got seven inches of rain the fol- well, there's a week in between, and then we got seven inches of rain during the following week where it rained eight days in a row. But since that time, they've had really good weather, and they're making concrete pours about twice a week out there now, two to 500 feet stretches. And they did another pour this morning, plan to do another pour on Friday. So they're making good progress. By the end of the week, we should be well over 50%, if weather doesn't bother them, or if they don't have another delay of some sort. But it's progressing along very well, and I think it's gonna be a project that the, the area's gonna be very proud of when it's done. And I guarantee you, it's a lot better than what was put in there the first time. That, that concrete was about two inches thick in some areas, no wire in it, nothing under it, it was like poured on dirt. And, so that's why it failed as miserably as it did. It was just, you know, it, now, some of it's four inches thick, which is, that's what a driveway should be, but some of it's not four inches thick, so, that's why it just fell apart. And that was long before we had inspections, long before, well, about the time we were becoming a city, so, you know, that's just part of the growing pains, I think, that you inherit something that you don't really know how it was constructed, so... And that's all I have. We have a planning commission report, and Alderman Anderson attended the meeting and can give you the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Somehow, I drew the short straw. This meeting went, this was the longest agenda meeting I think I've ever attended, so, just put it that way. Two of, two of the items under new, but there was no business, old business, there was no non-agenda items. There was three items on new business. Two of the three came before us tonight, which were the request for amendment to the master street plan and the master zoning plan for the development along, or, middle Odom. Which that was passed unanimously, I believe, by, for a due pass for, for us. And then the third one, which is the, which was a variance request that was asked by Steve and Cheryl Mosley in regards to a fence or, or enclosure around the swimming pool. And the variance was asked in the, it's a very complicated matter, and that's why it took a long time, but basically, in the short version, they were asking to make a variance for the back part of their property not being closed by a fence, because it is adjacent to a waterway or a natural barrier. And so the, the applicants were asking for that to be considered as the barrier instead of a fence. And that did not pass. It was a three to four vote, so it was, you know, it was a pretty split vote, but it was not passed. And the applicants will have, they can have the opportunity to come before us and ask for that same variance. So just, that might be something to keep in mind. But that was pretty much what was covered under the Malmell Planning Commission.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson.
Thank you.
Alderman's comments? Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things. One, I'd like to back up to the fishing derby real quick. Something hit me after we'd already discussed this. I have been asked to go toss a lure into the water for an individual that's in a wheelchair, and I, it wouldn't surprise me, because he's, he's really not capable of doing that, but he wants to participate in the fishing thing. A lot of seniors use this just to get out of their apartment, you know? And, so if somebody wanted to volunteer for something like that, I think it would be a good thing for some of our seniors, and I'm sure that you'd go to the senior center and volunteer there. The second thing is also about the senior citizens center. They have started a relatively new program that I think is just awesome, and I'm trying to get as much public information about it out there as I can. It's called Bingo for Bucks. What it is, is they play bingo, the seniors play bingo, and they get, if they win, they get something like Monopoly money, bucks. They have tables set up, like banquet tables, and they have things like shampoo, and soap, and laundry detergent, and so on, hand lotion. And I've even talked to Tawana and suggested we might even consider things like gloves, for, 'cause winter's coming up, or scarves, that sort of thing. Now, $20 from us is not that much money. To them, it's everything. I could tell you stories about people making choices with the few pennies they have. It's almost depressing at times. So if, if you, if you wanna talk to your church about it, maybe your church can help, or individuals can donate either money. My wife and I just went down to Dollar General, and they've got a whole big, long section there of dollar stuff. It's just ideal for these people. So, we got $20 worth of stuff, which is like four bags of stuff to put on the table. So you can either take that kinda stuff in, no food items, no food items, or you can take them a little bit of money, it doesn't have to be much, and it surely is appreciated by the seniors, so...
So do we just bring it to the senior?
To the senior citizens, don't bring it to me, senior center.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Alderman Mosley?
I was gonna mention, I was down in Houston, Texas over the weekend, and every time I go down there, I, I'd notice more and more differences between Houston and Malmell as far as planning and zoning and that sort of thing. They basically don't do any zoning down there. It's just totally amazing that things get done and people can still move around, because they don't plan the width of the street, you know, arterial and curbing and that sort of thing. They'll go with a street that's, that's been there for 50 years, and people start building little houses along it, and it just, it, it's amazing, and, and problems occur as a result, so... Anyway, it's quite a, quite an education, actually. Just thought I'd mention that.
Alright, thank you very much, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to find out how we're doing on the fire station, and it looks like the senior citizens center's moving along pretty well.
Yeah, there's, we're waiting on a couple of small items to come in on the fire station. I know a sink is one of them that we're waiting on to get in. They still, we should have it this, they think, the second or third week in September that they'll turn it over to us, but Chief Ezele's banking on the 1st of October, so, just, you know...
It's probably good money.
Yeah, yeah, but, but they are getting close on that, and they've still got the irrigation to do and landscaping outside also, but it's pretty well-secured now, and almost everything is in the facility. They were still painting the last time I was down there and doing a couple of other things, but it's coming along really well. And the Senior Wellness Center is about 30%, 33% done. The, you know, it's, it's at that stage where it looks like a lot of stuff is going on, because, you know, the brick's going up, and they're, they're working on the roof and some things like that. It'll slow back down too, when they start doing all the intricate work on the inside and everything, but they've got almost all the, the electricity roughed in, well, they do have all the electricity roughed in, and the plumbing roughed in, and all that and everything, and, and working on the, the walls, basically, is what they're working on right now. And working on the parking lot also, they're doing some work to the parking lot to try to get it put in before wintertime, because its anticipated open date'll be January, February timeframe, and that's not a good time to be trying to put a parking lot in, and so, they're trying to get into that and get it, as much of it done as they can now, so...
Okay, thank you for the update.
You're welcome. Any other aldermen's comments? Mr. City Attorney?
So, I just wanted to point out, in the O'Leary lawsuit, the plaintiff has filed a response today, which is nice and thin, so I'll have something to read tonight. I also included in the council packet just a letter on abstentions and conflicts of interest, which is there for y'all to look at. If you have any questions about a particular case, I'd be happy to brainstorm with you, but in a lot of cases, it's just an analysis of how it, how it looks. There's obvious cases where there's an obvious conflict of interest, say, voting to, for a, a big bonus to yourself or something, but most of the cases are much more gray, and you just kind of have to look at not only whether you're able to vote in the public interest, as opposed to your own personal interest, but also how it, how it looks from the outside is also important. So if you ever have something that you wanna run by me or just talk about, I'd be happy to do that. Also, our city code requires that if you're going to abstain, you state the reason for your abstention and announce that you'll be abstaining, and that is prior to any discussion going on. There, of course, will be times where during discussion, you may then realize you have a, a conflict or an apparent conflict, and so choose, but a lot of times, you should know beforehand what that abstention is and announce it at that time. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. That's all I have on the agenda, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay, alright. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Meeting is adjourned.
I want so bad to come back to this thing now.